The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm gonna call the council to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Tonight, we're gonna begin our city council meeting by recognizing employees who have served the great city of Hastings and our residents for some period of years, and we're gonna go through a presentation. I will ask the council to please come in front of the Diaz as we congratulate you to the employee that's going to be recognized tonight. So why don't we just get ahead and get in front of the Diaz, okay?
Yes, your honor and council members of the audience, staff, pleased to see such a full house here tonight. If you Google the word teamwork, you get about 101 million results with quotes and images, articles. And if you read any leadership book or go to any leadership training, talks, there's bound to be mention about the importance of teamwork. And when you put both the team and the work into teamwork, great things happen, and that's what we see with our staff. And today is one of my favorite meetings, not just because it's the last one of the year, but it's because I get to stand here before you all and be part of a recognition of our staff and their years of service. I've had the good fortune to have these folks share their time with me and their expertise, and I will tell you, they are just something else. They're creative, smart, talented group of people. The Hastings community is very well-served. Tonight, over 360 years of service will be honored this evening. While not everybody will be here with us tonight, I hope you will join me in recognizing their contributions. We're gonna start with five years of service. We have Randall Graves, one of our police reservists. He isn't able to join us tonight. We have Ryan Klein, one of our police officers. Yes, if you wanna go and shake the hands of the council, and then we will do a group photo at the end. We have PJ Lippert. Is PJ here? PJ is one of our paid-on-call Fire and EMS staff, celebrating five years. William Pope. Is William here tonight? Five years, one of our Fire and EMS staff. Robert Wargo. Is Robert here? And suddenly he appears. Ryan McGraw. Is Ryan here tonight with us? Ryan wasn't able to make it. Ryan, he's been, he's five years as a paid-on-call, but he's also four years as a full-time staff in the Fire and EMS department. Moving on to 10 years, Kathy Belial. Kathy, in our police department. And as much as she wants me to pass her by, Julie Flattan from Administration, 10 years of service. Justin Fortney. Where's Justin? Justin's our city planner and HPC specialist. Chad Jensen, their Fire EMS. Chad is 10 years as a paid-on-call, five years as a full-time. He's not here tonight. Adam Schumacher in our IT department. Adam, 10 years. And Jamie Stevens. I saw Jamie. Jamie is one of our fire captains. He's 10 years as a paid-on-call. Congratulations. And Al, Al Storley. Al's not able to make it tonight. He's been our fire inspector for 10 years, but he's been with the department for 32 years, so, yeah. And I know John Townsend wasn't able to make it tonight. John is 10 years as our Assistant Fire and EMS Director, 17 as a paid-on-call member. And the last year for 10 years is Jesse Vial. He's one of our parkkeepers, and he's a, he's a, just a great guy, and he wasn't able to make it tonight. So, thank you to all of our 10-year service members. Moving on to 15 years, we have two of the management team members that I'm just privileged to get to work with. We have Nick Egger, 15 years as, he's our Public Works Director. And John Hinsman. Where's John? 15 years, Community Development. 20 years? 20 years, 20 years. Steve Crisp, 20 years. Now, we've got some folks that kinda wear two hats, so they're serving, they're getting an award for 20 years as a paid-on-call member of the Fire and EMS Department. We've got Craig Latch. Craig Latch is 11 years. Craig is one of our full-timers, 11 years as full-time. We've got Mark Knoll, also 11 years as full-time, 20 years, paid-on-call. And it's Chris Paulson here tonight. Chris Paulson's been with us for 20 years, 14 years as a full-timer, and he's currently one of our captains. All right, 25 years. Billy McNamara, 25 years in our Public Works Department. And Gary Rudy. Gary Rudy is also with our Public Works Department, 25 years. All right. 30 years. 30 years, folks. We've got two that are celebrating this year. First one is Bruce Gannrude, 30 years with our Fire and EMS Department. And Mark Piney, our Public Works Superintendent, 30 years. So now, I think the mayor wants to say a few words before we take a picture.
I want to direct these remarks tonight to our employees who are here and those who are not here, to all the city employees, since tonight we're recognizing many of you for your wonderful contributions to the citizens of our community. You know, B.C. Forbes once said, "Christmas is a tonic for our souls. It moves us to think of others rather than ourselves." And as I ponder the meaning of this, I am reminded of the tremendous commitment of our city employees to the betterment of our Hastings citizens. Effective public service requires us to think of others rather than ourselves. And as we work together to provide a better quality of life for our residents, all of us as employees of the city of Hastings, especially you, must remember that what we do, all of us in this room as employees in the city of Hastings, we impact lives, we change lives. No matter what department that you work for, no matter what's your task, you have the ability to impact our residents' lives. What a true gift that is, an opportunity that is. So on behalf of myself and on behalf of the Hastings City Council, we want to wish you, all of you, a happy holiday. We want to thank you for your valuable service to the community of Hastings. We are very proud of the accomplishments that many of you have brought to our great city. And as we close out this past year, let us celebrate the productive 2017, year that we just had, and look forward to making 2018 even better. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. And now, we're gonna go for a photo, okay? We'll join you as soon as we can. Well, that is the highest motion. Okay, I'm gonna call on Chief Schaefer to come up to give a presentation. Chief, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, unfortunately, our Public Safety Advisory Commission member Patty McCauley is not here, at least I didn't see her in the audience. So she said she was gonna be here, so I don't know if something came up. But tonight, we're just recognizing Patty for her six years of service on the Public Safety Advisory Commission. For those of you that don't know a lot about the commission, it's an advisory group to the council that advises and acts as a liaison between our Public Safety Police Department and the Fire Department. And some of the projects that they are primarily responsible for is our National Night Out, if you've had an opportunity to engage in your neighbors and your neighborhoods, and also the Lions Park event that we had this past summer. They've also assisted with the police, or I'm sorry, the Police Department Open House, the Fire Department Open House, and in addition to assisting us with interviews when we interview new employees for our respective departments, and in some policy issues. One, a couple in particular from the Police Department perspective was the body camera project, and also our dangerous dog ordinance. So they do play a vital role in decision-making when we bring those forth. So for her service, we'd be recognizing her for six years of service, and I'll present her with this certificate the next time I come across her.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that presentation. And next, I'll recognize Chris Jenkins, our Parks Director. Chris, welcome.
I'll wear my name tag next time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Much like the chief, I'm here to recognize a commissioner who's been with the city, served the city for six years. Jordi Polina, come on up. Jordi has served, like I said, for six years with the Parks and Recreation Commission, being an advocate for the citizens of Hastings, an ambassador for the city, an ambassador for the Parks and Recreation Department as well. Many items such as Parkland Dedication, when new developments come up, run through the Parks and Recreation Commission, park improvement requests. If you're familiar with the Veterans Baseball Park press box, that was a park improvement request that was brought to the Parks and Recreation Department, started that process through the Parks and Rec Commission, and any other variety of park improvement requests that come through. Also, they help us out with design and layout for new playgrounds, redevelopment of playgrounds. Some of them are involved with the comprehensive planning processes as well. So the citizen advisory commissions that we have serve a very important role for us here in the city of Hastings. We appreciate their service very much, sir. Thank you.
My pleasure. Appreciate it.
If you wanna say anything, you're welcome.
Jordan, would you like to say a few words?
No.
Oh, okay, that's okay. Thank you for your service. It means a lot. The city of Hastings really appreciates the works of our volunteers and the dedication you bring to the job. And it's important work, and it's greatly appreciated, not only here at the Diaz, but from the citizens of our community. So thank you very much for your work.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Next council, we have a presentation. We have Dakota County Commissioner Mike Slavik, who is here tonight to give us a brief update of what's going on with the county. And we appreciate, Commissioner, you being here this evening to give us your annual report. Welcome to the meeting. I noticed when you walked in here, you almost took a seat up here.
Yeah, right.
It kinda used to be in there, right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and those in the audience and watching on TV. As the mayor had stated, this is my annual, I guess my fifth annual update to the city of Hastings on what's happening at Dakota County. And I do have a PowerPoint, sorry for those on the council that you have to look backwards if you, if you, if you choose to see this. And really, this is mostly an update just to give of what's been happening in Dakota County in the last year, as well as looking forward what we have. And so I just wanted to share with all of you, throughout the first half of 2017, Dakota County was in the process of leaving the County Transit Improvement Board, commonly known as CTIB, which is the quarter percent sales tax that was collected amongst five of the seven counties in the metro area to go into a pot that went for transit in the metro. By leaving that organization in June of this past year, we are now able to have 100% local control of that quarter percent, whereas in the past, the roughly 16.6 million a year was, Dakota County was getting somewhere between 30 and 40% of that to be able to use for Dakota County projects. Now, effective October 1, 100% of that is being used for projects in Dakota County. Going back to the very bottom one, the city and the county did have its very first transportation workshop earlier this fall, and with that, you're well aware of that, but the audience may not be aware of that, how important it is to shop local every day, but especially now that those dollars that you do spend in Dakota County stay in Dakota County and are able to improve our county road system. And with that, as was said, we enacted a local sales tax that is able to, that same quarter percent, we did not raise taxes, and were able to maintain those dollars, just be able to keep them in Dakota County. In 2017, we preserved 42 miles of pavement with restoration, and then did 53 road projects totaling almost 73 million dollars. We approved a maintenance facility study, which does have impact on our Empire Campus, our Hastings and Farmington Transportation Plants, as well as some of our park maintenance facilities. With that, we did approve a park visitor and a natural resource plan for our park system, as well as the natural resource restoration of our 5,500 acres of land that is within the Dakota County park system. Next, we did go and continue on our efforts with the Metropolitan Council reform, as I think I've shared here in past years of the update. Dakota County, as well as the city, has kind of love-hate relationships with the Metropolitan Council, and there are many positive things that go with that working relationship. But without an elected voice or a, even a little bit different with appointed elected officials, you, we have a little different, different take on that in terms of some of the requirements that are put on by a organization that's appointed by whoever the governor is at the time. And then lastly, we did have, I felt a very positive working relationship with the transportation workshop this year, hoping to have future ones down the line with the city and the county. Going back to speaking with Tom Novak from his dime on the city council, he's pretty sure that we have never had a workshop at the city of Hastings with Dakota County and staff, at least in the 40-plus years that he's been involved in either the city or the county. So I think that was a great working opportunity, given the fact that most other cities in Dakota County have something like this on a very regular basis. Next, moving on to the budget, just wanted to share a couple of things. Obviously, the county, just like the city, goes and starts this process early. We start our budget process in February, and officially last week, on December 12, approved our budget. And with that, you know, we have a lot of pressures, like all of you do, for demands of residents, as well as the, you know, just the demands that happen with various state mandates and the growth that does go with that. So we certainly felt that this was a fiscally disciplined, long-term budget that also was respectful of the tax dollars. And some highlights of this budget is, next year, you'll note, our transportation budget is smaller, just under 56 million, and a lot of that is the preparation with the new dollars with the now sales tax. We'll actually be ramping up our transportation for the next couple of years. We've just about doubled what we'll be putting into our projects in the next five years after next year. We have to certainly hire new engineers and that to be able to work on those construction projects. Next thing that will certainly impact the city of Hastings and its residents is County Road 46 from Pine Street all the way to 52 is going to be resurfaced next year. It's going to take quite a while. It's a $4 million project to be able to do that, and that's going to be from Pine to 52. The plan is to start that project after school gets out with the Hastings schools, and has to be done by the September 1, because the intersection of 42 and 55 is going to have some reconstruction starting September 1. So we don't want to block everybody heading west out of town two ways at the same time. So one will be done first part of summer, and then the second one will be summer into fall. One of the things that I just want to focus on, that we've really put initiative into, is our housing and homeless. It was a year ago now that we had some area churches in the Apple Valley, Eagan area, that went and realized that as much as Dakota County was doing some great things, we still had homeless issues that we have not really been able to address. So some churches, last year, we had a really cold spell, opened up their, their buildings for homeless people within Dakota County. We ended up realizing that was about double the number of individuals that we thought were homeless in all of Dakota County. So we've actually went and have dedicated a million dollars in new resources to addressing our housing and homelessness issues within Dakota County. And one of those things that we've been able to do is partner with a lot of those churches that took the lead last year, and we now have a, which will be a permanent temporary winter shelter. So we have 50 beds of a shelter that goes, will go from November 1 until March 1. Forty-two of those 50 beds were used in the month of November, with about a quarter of those residents actually had full-time employment, and we had about 30 to, almost 35% had some sort of employment, and were still sleeping on cots in one of the churches in Apple Valley. So it has been something that we really addressed that, but as the year went on, we created a homeless task force with Dakota County. And one of the things that we decided with that was, we chose not to go and do what our peers in Hennepin and Ramsey have done with building an emergency shelter year-round, you know, to the tunes of millions of dollars, because we really felt that Dakota County is a little bit different situation, and we wanted to really try to focus on addressing the root of the problem, rather than just a temporary one night, night after night after night. So there's gonna be a lot more systematics and research into how that is gonna go about with those individuals, working to try to find the appropriate resources. And that's where the remainder of those resources will be coming from. Next thing in our budget that was just approved is, we will see a major renovation of Pleasant Hill Library in Hastings and Heritage Library in Lakeville. That will include an additional expansion onto the city library at Pleasant Hill, as well as a, just a totally redesign of the property, to the tune of about three and a half million dollar renovation on that. Phase one of the maintenance study that we talked about is happening. Of course, that is not the first steps of Hastings in there, but there's gonna be some expansion to Empire Township. And then our last point in there, within our budget, we did go and do a 79% reduction in our regional rail levy. So if you see on your Dakota County taxes, you'll have two taxes, a Dakota County tax and a regional rail tax. It is our intent to eliminate the Dakota County regional rail tax entirely. For an average home, that's about a $9 tax. And we're doing a 79% reduction for 2018, and then we will come to a point within the next two to three years where that will actually be eliminated entirely. And a lot of that is due to that sales tax that was able to cover some of those costs. Just want to briefly show, we have a, we did pass a $370 million budget. You can see the green and blue parts of that towards the left is actually the operating budget, and then the gray area is all of our construction and transportation projects, the capital improvement with that. Of that $250 million is actually people and the services that Dakota County provides. That is pretty consistent with where we've been before. All of this, I should add, is something that we are very proud of the fact that our total property tax levy, that's all 87 counties at the very end there in the red, is Dakota County. So for the third year in a row, Dakota County will have the lowest property tax levy of your county portion. And a lot of the major reasons for that is, we are also now in our third year of being 100% debt-free. So fortunately for that, as we're able to take those initiatives and addressing some of the needs of our communities, like housing and homelessness, we're also able to be a very good steward of the tax dollar with that. And this just slide for you to share on Hastings, the average value of a home residential in Hastings went up by over 7%. After exclusions, you're seeing, you're gonna see the county portion go up about 2.9% or about $15 for the average home on the county portion in Dakota County, or in the city of Hastings. And that is mostly, as I said, with a 7% increase in value. If your home actually did not go up in value according to the county, your county taxes will go down. So that's what I have there. And lastly, it's always my pleasure to come here and present once a year and, and just give an update of what's happening at Dakota County. You certainly know how to get a hold of me throughout the year, and as do the residents. My contact information is up above, and I'm available for any questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your presentation. Once again, appreciate the valuable information you bring every year. Council, is there any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, your honor. Thank you very much, Mike. That was very informative. And that was actually the first that I had heard about the million dollars that was appropriated for the homelessness situation here in Dakota County. And so I would just welcome to learn more about that and how the city might help, trying to learn more about providing affordable housing opportunities and what the city can do, and if there's a role for the city to help with the homelessness as well. And I don't have the answers, but I would really love to learn more about that in the future.
Well, thank you, council member. And if I may just quickly add to that, it was in the news that Cochran- the news that Cochran House, which is our men's homeless shelter for Dakota County, will be closing. Initially, it was going to be closing the end of December, and ultimately, we were able to find some resources to keep that open until the end of May. And one of the things within that shelter study was realizing that having a shelter in Hastings that's literally about a ten, fifteen walk, just even to get into the heart of the community, was not a very, was so many challenges with the lack of transit and transportation that the shelter was probably, the decision to ultimately close it was something that I think was supported by others, but obviously not until we could figure out what was going to be in its replacement on that. So I certainly appreciate that and any partnerships that can go on. Hastings has been a great partner in this with the Community Development Agency and our workforce housing, our senior housing. We've had a great relationship for many years on that and hope to continue that as long as we can. And I think my last thing is if you're looking for kind of a volunteer site in there, through Matrix Housing, which is who's running that temporary homeless shelter, they do actually have opportunities for preparing meals for the individuals in the shelter, as well as some needs that do come up. So there is a website on Matrix Housing that's addressing the Dakota County Temporary Winter Shelter that the residents or you may be interested in supporting.
With that... Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to y'all.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we have before us the minutes of the regular city council meeting of December fourth, two thousand and seventeen. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. We have council items to be considered, any council items to be considered. Seeing none, we'll go to the council, excuse me, consent agenda. Counsel, what's your wish? Consent agenda. Councilmember Foltz makes moves to adopt the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Liefeld. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to awarding of contracts and public hearing. Our first public hearing tonight is a second reading to consider amendments to city ordinances, chapters, fees. And Julie will present that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, Council's requested to conduct a public hearing, consider an ordinance amendment adjusting various city fees. There are two changes to note from the first reading that was held two weeks ago. One is the construction inspection escrow was slated to go from five hundred to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That's going to be eliminated. We actually collect that fee as part of our building permit fees. And also, under the civic arena, the public skate freestyle is listed in the memo as going from five dollars to ten dollars, but it's actually going from five dollars to six dollars. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Yeah, what I'll do at this point is I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in regards to amendments to city ordinances, chapters thirty-four, fees? Anyone here who'd like to speak to that particular issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brock. That motion is before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing regarding a rezone from R three to C one, McShane Development. John, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm just going to pull up some information on the request that we have before us tonight. There is an action to hold a public hearing related to an ordinance amendment for the rezoning of the property itself, which is located on the corner of North Frontage Road and Pleasant Drive right here. It's about a point-six acre property currently owned by the city. And as you're aware, we have a purchase and development agreement signed with McShane Development to sell the city-owned property to them for development of a thirty-five-hundred square foot office medical center for the property. Prior to doing that, there are a couple of actions that need to take place. One of those is to have a rezoning of the property and a comprehensive plan amendment. Looking at the property itself, when we look at our comprehensive plan map, this little gray area indicates right-of-way. We never really indicated, we never really thought that this was a developable piece of property in the past, had marketed it that way before, and so our future land use map shows that as being right-of-way. So we're looking at amending the comprehensive plan to change this property designation from right-of-way to commercial, and then consequently to amend the city code on a rezoning to rezon the property from R three medium-density residential to commercial itself. So as you look at this intersection, the pink areas here and the kind of reddish areas are areas that are presently zoned commercial on the property. So we are in favor of both actions. We feel that they take into consideration the best use of the property into the future and are consistent with adjacent land uses on the property. Both of these items were reviewed by our planning commission on November twenty-seventh. They did hold a public hearing. We did not have any testimony at the public hearing during that time, and was a recommendation on both actions to approve them and to forward those to city council. So at this point, I can answer any questions related to the actions, or you may hold a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone here who'd like to speak to the issue of rezoning that particular property from R three to C one, McShane Development? Anyone here who's here to speak to that particular? Please, come to the podium, give your name and address. Welcome to the meeting. Are you this evening, Jewel?
Good.
Go ahead.
My name is Jewel Pickard, and I just had a question, actually, is if you look at that particular piece of property, it doesn't look that big to be able to accommodate a building of that size, and I was kind of wondering if parking had been figured into that, because it doesn't seem like there would be enough, and if that would spill over into some of the other streets next to that.
Go ahead, John. Go ahead and answer the question.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to address that. Yeah, it does look pretty tight on that property, being point-six acres. We had the developer put together a concept plan for development, which showed the thirty-five-hundred square foot building, as well as about twenty or thirty parking spaces on there. So they meet our minimum parking requirements with, on the site, along with the building footprint and the stormwater drainage. It's a tight fit, but it'll fit on there. And from talking to the developer, from a practical standpoint, employee-wise, they need about ten spaces a day for their employees, so they should be more than adequate with the parking that they're providing.
Okay. That answer your question? Okay, Jewel? Okay. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this particular issue? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, let's go to that particular subject that's under B one, under Community Development. We'll also take a look at B two as well, since it concerns itself with the McShane Development. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Brock makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion to the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Then we have amend the comprehensive plan, land use designation. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Lund makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Liefeld. That motion is before the body. Discussion to that motion. Okay? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing relating to amend city code, chapter one fifty-five, funeral homes and crematoria. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. We have before you an action tonight to hold a public hearing and to consider a second reading of an ordinance amendment pertaining to funeral homes and crematory within the city of Hastings. What we're looking to do is to amend the, a couple of things within the city code. One is within your screen right now, which is to provide a definition of what is a funeral home. And within the definition of a funeral home, a funeral home would include crematoria uses. Crematoria uses would be something that could be conducted as part of a funeral home operation itself. The second would be is to include, as a special use permit, allowance of funeral homes within the R two zoning district. Now, the R two zoning district is a residential district that essentially covers the older part of Hastings, from downtown to Highway fifty-five to Pine Street, that older portion of Hastings. As you're probably aware, we have two existing funeral homes right now that operate within the R two district, and right now, they're designated as lawfully existing non-conforming. Essentially, what that means is they're not really recognized within the zoning code, but they've existed there for such a time that they're mostly grandfathered in. We have had one of the funeral homes that has approached us, Wise Funeral Homes, that has asked for some improvements to take place on-site, in particular, expansion of a parking area, and also to perform crematory services on-site itself. Within the existing zoning code, those uses would not be allowed. And so what we're asking for tonight is to consider an amendment to the zoning code to allow those via a special use permit. What that would mean is that a special use permit would be necessary prior to operation, reviewed by the planning commission, reviewed by the city council, and a public hearing to consider what sort of qualifications and what sort of conditions may be placed before issuance of it. So just as a reminder, tonight, what we're asking for is the amendment to the city code. We're not taking any action related to any of the Wise funeral home requests tonight, but this would pave the way for that to occur in the future. So we did have this reviewed before the planning commission on November twenty-seventh. They did vote five-zero to recommend approval of the action at that time. We did have some testimony from the public during the public hearing, asking how the changes would affect the Katuria Smith funeral property and future expansion of commercial uses itself. As a reminder on this one, we are looking, upon this amendment, we are looking to add funeral homes to the residential district. There would not be any further expansion of commercial uses beyond that one here. And with this request as well, we had a planning committee meeting on October thirtieth, where we asked the question of the committee to see if this was something that we should explore. They gave us the go-ahead, and we're coming forward with the amendment tonight. So I can answer any questions you have at this point, or you can open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. I will open up the public hearing at this time. Public hearing is now, anyone here who would like to speak in regards to the amendment to city code, chapter one fifty-five, which deals with funeral homes and crematoria? Anyone here who'd like to speak to that particular issue? Amy? For the record, please, welcome to the meeting, first of all, and for the record, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Amy Martin, and I live right across from the Katuria Smith Funeral Home. I did attend the meeting a few weeks ago, and my question, I guess, for John, probably, is if this amendment is changed, and in a few years from now, someone wants to expand the parking lot in our neighborhood, a historic neighborhood designated, is changing this going to remove any possibility of that being turned down? I feel like this, we have a neighborhood kind of at risk right now, because the former Rosewood Inn is empty and bank-owned, as I understand it. I don't know, Justin might have more information on that, but I am, what I fear is that if the Rosewood Inn doesn't get purchased and fixed up, and somebody just bought the funeral home, and it is another funeral home company, that they are going to want to put in a huge parking lot in a historic neighborhood. And the point was made at the meeting two weeks ago, that when, after, when the transition to funeral homes started, the funeral industry wanted to make people feel comfortable with, you know, turning over their loved ones' remains to a stranger, so they called them funeral homes and funeral parlors, and they went into residential neighborhoods so that it felt more home-like. And Katuria has been a good neighbor, but they fit in the neighborhood. They were small, they don't have a huge parking lot. There was another neighbor there two weeks ago, and when there's a funeral, our neighborhood is filled with cars, and that's okay. We all, you know, drive slower and pick our way around, and it still works out, because everyone's considerate of each other. They fit in the neighborhood. But an expansion that could include adding a parking lot doesn't seem like fit for our neighborhood. We have actually already lost a beautiful, irreplaceable historic home in the sixties to a parking lot for the church. And so I guess my question is, does changing this remove any protection for the historic nature of our neighborhood? That's my fear.
Go ahead, John, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Martin, I can address that. As far as the changes that are being contemplated tonight, they would provide funeral homes and their ancillary expansions as a special use permit. So if a parking lot was to come forward, for example, for Katuria Smith, it would require a special use permit. What that means is that certain conditions would need to be established, and certain review higher than what a permitted use outright would need to take place in the property. Irregardless of that, there's, if there's a historic structure that would be in the path of, that would be potentially demolished, I think the protections, the potential protections are still in place for that. The inaction of this ordinance amendment would have no effect on that. And so I think the thing that would mostly protect against it would be a historic designation of a home site, but with this ordinance itself, the amendment that we're looking at, it would, any amendment or any expansion of the use would require that special use permit. So they would be able to set conditions and able to have a more intensive review than what we normally would have on something that would be permitted. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you, John, for answering that. Is there any further testimony tonight, speaking to this issue on city code? Please, sir, come to the podium, give us your name and address. Welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
My name is Ralph Tapper. I live next to the Wise Funeral Home. And could you explain to me what you mean when you say cremation services? Could you explain on that?
Sure, sure. Please, John?
The question that was asked was what the expansion of cremation services would entail on that. What the Wisest would be asking to do upon the ordinance amendment would be to perform cremations on-site there. What they've talked about is to build a separate building in which to do that, probably located on the northern half of the property near Fourth Street. So that procedure, cremations, would be able to take place upon this amendment. Now, the ordinance amendment would allow that to take place. They would still need to get a permit in order to do that, but this would set the table for that to be considered in the future.
So that would be considered?
Correct. Upon this amendment, it's something that could be considered. Right now, it could not.
This is not the end, right?
Right. It would, it'd be the end for the ordinance amendment, but specifically for the Wisest coming forward with any approvals for cremation, that would be a separate permit in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the council on this particular subject? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, let's go to that subject. What's your wish? Number three under Community Development. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Brock?
I just have a question, because a lot of the comments and the notes revolve around parking, and I know that's not part of this amendment, but I just want to ask a side question. So when we get a special use permit that comes forward for a funeral home in a residential neighborhood, what kind of parking is required in that scenario? Because I do see the parking, you know, the neighborhoods are filling up, it doesn't seem incredibly safe to me, and I understand these two that we've been talking about have been there for a long time, but what are the requirements under the special use permit for parking? Is it typical that we just waive the need for parking if it doesn't exist, or what happens as a part of that process?
Sure. Councilmember, with the two existing funeral homes being in operation prior to any parking requirements, they didn't have to fulfill any. In the future, if with Wise coming forward or any other parking expansions coming forward, we would take a look at having one space per every three seats of the main reception hall. That's what we've used as a standard before, and taking a look at Wise's operations and their proposal to provide parking on that, I think they would meet that requirement on there.
Is there any further discussion? Seek a motion, Counsel? Councilmember Liefeld? Councilmember Liefeld moves to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Brock. That motion is before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Balsantik?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't want to put the cart before the horse here, but when there is a crematorium that is placed at a funeral home, whether it's, you know, in a residential area... is placed at a funeral home, whether it's, you know, in a residential area or not, what are the, what are the inspection requirements and fulfillments that have to take place? I'm not sure if you can answer this, but we have our esteemed building inspector in the back, Mr. Bach, and he might be able to talk to it, but perhaps you can too.
From my recollection from earlier research on this, the Minnesota Department of Health has standards in which crematories must adhere to. And I'm gonna look at Mike for a second, see if he knows that there's a permit required through them as well. Yeah, it sounds, there's a permit required through the Department of Health for the operation of crematories.
And the reason I'm asking that is I did get some neighborhood response about that. You know, it's a crematorium, it's going to be a furnace, there's going to be a chimney, you know, what kinds of requirements, what kinds of regulations, who's gonna be inspecting the premises to make sure that everything is, you know, the way it should be. And this is, you know, just to make assurances to the public that we do have good backup systems for inspections and so forth. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have a motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a second reading, a public hearing for amendments to the city ordinance regarding of right-of-way management. Nick, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks. Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney, Dan Fliegel, for introductions.
Okay, well, our esteemed city attorney then.
Mr. Mayor and council, the council tonight is asked to hold a public hearing and a second reading of a proposed ordinance amendment. It would be a comprehensive ordinance regulating rights of way within the city. The existing ordinance in the city is fairly simple now, and the regulations were undertaken mostly at a staff level up to this point. This would, again, would be a comprehensive ordinance that would regulate all uses of the right-of-way, but it's really being pushed by the wireless community, who has obtained some legislation to really force cities to allow certain facilities within the rights of way that would not have otherwise been there. The ordinance talks about two main categories, small wireless facilities, and Nick will have a few pictures of those here, I think. These are generally smaller devices that are going to be placed on existing poles or possibly replacement poles, smaller in size, and they are generally repeater units, I think, that transmit from all of our smartphones to main units that will be a collector unit and transmit data over hard lines or fiber to a central location. The right-of-way regulations will also regulate installations of wireless structures, generally poles that will be placed within the right-of-way, either existing poles again or new poles that could be installed. There are height restrictions and location restrictions on those as well. So again, what you're looking at here, I think, is more of one of the small wireless facilities, and Nick can correct me if I'm wrong there, but it is placed on a support structure. These are generally going to come in from applications from wireless providers. Sometimes they'll be coming in in multiple requests, that is allowed under the new law. Cities have limited ability to prohibit these, so we have had to make some accommodations based on the legislation to allow these. What you're being asked to do tonight, in addition to the public hearing and the second reading on the main ordinance, is also to approve a co-location agreement that would be used as a template whenever the city is asked to have some of these small wireless facilities placed upon their existing poles. That allows some rent to be collected by the city, although it's a fairly small amount, and that's also regulated by the statute. And finally, we have, this is a very long ordinance, so we've included a summary publication resolution that would allow for publication of just excerpts from the ordinance instead of the whole thing as a cost-saving device. That requires five votes. The other votes would just be a majority of the council. So I can stand for any questions. Nick can certainly run through any of the pictures if that may be helpful, but generally we're asking that there be a public hearing and a second reading of the ordinance, followed by the two other actions.
Thank you, counselor. Appreciate that. I'm gonna open up the public hearing at this time. The hearing is open. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the issue relating to right-of-way management? Anyone here who would like to speak to that particular issue? It's a little mind-boggling, but, okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, that's number one under Public Works. Let's go to that discussion. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a clarifying question in reading through this. So when the small wireless facility, the deployment of small wireless facilities in any public right-of-way meant companies could come in, they could use our poles, we couldn't stop them, we couldn't charge them. Is that accurate?
Fairly accurate, subject to some regulation. The city still has the ability to regulate for public safety, health and safety issues, but that's what the legislature was trying to limit us to, not a straight prohibition and really no, they limited the amount of rent that we could charge.
Okay, so this particular ordinance then would, in essence, they'd have to go through the city in order to use a pole or put a pole in one of our public right-of-ways within the city limits?
That's correct. As far as using existing poles, the addition of new poles would be different in residential districts as opposed to commercial or other districts. The cities are allowed to require special use or conditional use permits with the process that was discussed by John earlier for an application in residential districts. So that would give the council a little more control on the placement of poles in residential areas. They're effectively permitted uses, though, in commercial and other districts, so there won't be a lot of regulation allowed on those.
Councilmember Brox.
I'm just curious if we've received any requests to locate any small cell wireless to date?
Not with specifics, councilmember. There has been one entity that's been asking us about where our process is at. I think they're anxious to see that come to fruition so they can start the wheels turning on an application. However, that particular entity is, when they came forward originally, they were interested in furnishing a pole structure, a large pole structure, not so much the small devices like you see in the photo here. It could evolve into something like that. We're not sure if they've retooled in the time in between, but we're expecting it to take off at some point here in early 2018.
In the 20, oh, I'm sorry, did you have more questions, councilmember? I didn't mean to cut you off. I apologize. You know, this was a much debated subject of the Capitol in 2017 legislative session. Of course, there was big money behind the media companies, wireless companies and cell companies to do this. Ironically, you know, we're all excited about the Super Bowl coming to Minneapolis. That's really what sped this up. That's really why I was at the legislature, because they wanted to be able, these companies covering the Super Bowl, wanted to be able to have this opportunity to fill these up in Minneapolis because of the increased data, it's gonna be easier with all the visitors and everything else and the size of the event. So as part of that process, we had the folks at the Capitol said, you know, let's move this to be statewide so we can do this in St. Paul and other cities. And they were, they came in and said, we shouldn't have to pay a dime. So even though we were getting a small fee, our friends at the League of Minnesota City and our friends at Metro Cities lobbied hard to get some of these impacts minimized a little bit so we can collect some fees, as Dan alluded to, not much, but at least we get something. And we have some regulation, even though it's limited. So this was, this was quite a battle at the Capitol. This is kind of what they came up with, as somewhat of a compromise, and that's where we are today. Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for that quick, you know, introduction overview over what's occurred, and I am concerned about what possibly the financial impact will be. It might not be within the first 12 months, but, you know, in the next five years, you know, when you go to conferences that are related to, you know, what's coming, you know, in the future via technology and video streaming and security services and things like that, you know, they talk about how the infrastructure is going to just boom. And so I think it would be interesting if staff could somehow financially track these requests and what the actual financial impact was to the city, and then, you know, what was actually, we were able to recoup, because it's my understanding that they can come in and request that, you know, that these devices be placed, I'm just gonna make something up, you know, down Vermillion Street on lights, like, I don't know, every 10 poles, whatever, and that the city wouldn't have the ability then to charge back to the request or the any fees associated with any kind of engineering analysis that might have to be done, you know, to be able to ascertain whether or not the structures are able to actually hold, you know, those devices. And so I just think it would be terrific if we had some kind of evidence to show what the impact is to our community, you know, at the expense of taxpayers, so that big business can actually save a couple bucks.
We can go back to the legislature someday with some-
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
...cost. Councilmember Brox? Excuse me, Dan?
I just want to note that, you know, the staff, we have talked about the need for following this and tracking it and tracking the cost. There is the ability to recapture management fees and fees associated with things like structural engineering evaluations for poles and things like that, so that is included in here. It's gonna be difficult to capture all that or know what it is in advance, so some history is gonna help us know better from year to year, and I think there is an intent of staff to track that and then try to narrow down the actual management costs to the application fees and get it right.
Councilmember Brox.
I did also want to note for everyone that is listening that Councilmember Foltz, Councilmember Balsanek and I, and Melanie Meskeli, were all at the Capitol, I believe in October, September, when this, when was this being discussed? Was it last year, last spring? And we actually met with our representative and senator at the time, and I don't know what they did individually, but we did have meetings with them to talk to them about how this would affect the city and that we were concerned about it, and advocated it on the city's behalf. So even though it maybe didn't go the way that we hoped it would, we did advocate on behalf of the city and what was in our best interest. And I think, I at least wrote several emails and letters and made phone calls, and I believe Councilmembers Foltz and Balsanek did the same. So I did want to point out that we were, in this instance, we were advocating on behalf of the city of Hastings, even though it didn't really go the way that we wanted it to. But I thought they deserved some recognition for that.
Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just curious about aesthetics and control over that. What, what, what type of, what type of recourse do you have if there's something like that on a really nice light pole that we're putting down by Vermillion, you know?
Two things there. The size of these structures is limited to a certain cubic foot, and so each of them have to be, on the pole have to be, can only be a certain maximum volume, and then also anything on the ground also has a limitation there. But there's also provisions for application on decorative poles, things like that, and we can impose restrictions on those to try to force these things to fit in better with the poles. I don't think they're ever gonna be perfect, and there may be a detraction from decorative poles, but at least we have some ability to regulate those and require the providers to try to shield them, try to make them consistent with the decorative poles as they come in.
Councilmember Balsanek.
Thank you, Your Honor. In my communication with the legislature, my standard phrase was "the fox is in the henhouse." It, the whole thing, I don't want to say it frightens me, but it does frighten me. This is something that I think is kind of being shoved down our throats. Now granted, you know, the bill that finally passed was one that was a model ordinance, or I should say a model ordinance was put together by the League of Minnesota Cities, of which we're a member. You know, and of course, our staff did work quite diligently on putting this all together. I just, and again, thank you to the staff and thank you to Dan for all of the work that you've done on this. I, I just, it's like a bucking bronco, it's like a fox in the henhouse, all of my agricultural-
Clichés.
-euphemisms here. I just see this as something that's gonna be hard to keep track of. You know, what's the size, what's the size of the unit they want to put in? Where do they want to put this pole and that pole? And if, I just don't know how much of this is coming in. I don't think anybody really does, except to say there's probably going to be a lot of it coming in, an awful lot of it coming in in the future. And, you know, we are collecting, as you said, some minimum fees. I'm not sure what kind of a burden this is putting on our city employees, our staff, in terms of keeping track of these, because my assumption, you know, having read through this, is that every time they want to put something like this up, this is not coming before the city council, right?
It has to be approved, though, by the-
But I mean, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be staff-approved. It just, you know, with all due respect to the staff, if I start walking down Second Street one day and I look and I go, what in the heck is that doing there? And then we've got to bring it before the council and then, you know, kind of start working backwards on the whole thing. I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with the whole situation. And I, you know, and I, why am I saying this? Because it was stated the staff is gonna keep very close track of this. We're gonna watch it like a hawk, and that's what we need to do. And perhaps, let's give us a report in a year or less, six months maybe even, so we can see exactly where this is going. And then we can run back to the legislature and, you know, make some more requests or some more euphemisms, I suppose. I'll try to think of some more in the meantime. But, you know, just to caution the public, you know, we just went through this whole thing with the FCC about, you know, internet neutrality, and that's been taken away from us, and now, you know, we've got companies that can come in and strap on a piece of equipment that, you know, can be on a historically accurate replication of a light standard, or in a commercial district, they say this is where we want the pole to be, and they go ahead and put it in, and what does that do to the aesthetics of our historic community? Something that I'm very, very concerned about, very concerned about.
Right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. As Dan indicated, if it was put on some kind of a historic pole or significance, we would have some governing ability over that. We could deny that. But your point's well-taken, that we'll continue. I'm sure, you know, our qualified staff has already got a plan out there about notifying us what these things are gonna look like, so I'm not, I'm not gonna be worried about being surprised, but your point about keeping track is duly noted. Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. What I was gonna say is, several months ago now, geez, I'm losing track of the seasons, but when the League of Minnesota Cities had conducted a webinar that was available on these small cell towers, and they had released documentation to go with it, and I read through that and I participated in the webinar, and not only was there provision for decorative light poles that you had control over that, I thought it was also within historic districts. And I haven't had the opportunity to revisit this, like in the last, you know, over the weekend, to double-check that. But I, I'm sorry, it was a thick packet this time around, and I didn't get a chance to, I had more time to have researched it, but I didn't, when I just perused what you provided, I didn't see any mention of the decorative pole ability to restrict, and then I didn't see anything about the historic district either, but like I said, it was a quick, you know, skimming over, and so I would just ask that, that get double-checked to help- that, that get double checked, um, to help preserve, um, not only the downtown area, but it might also help within the historic neighborhoods. Right? Anything's better than nothing at this point, so.
I was able to read a summary of it, uh, that the League of Minnesota Cities put out on it too, that indicated these protections.
Right.
Dan, did you want to add on anything to the comments?
I don't know how helpful it'll be, but subdivision three of section, you know, this is a voluminous thing, uh, 1.11 does say where an applicant proposes co-location on a decorative wireless support structure, which I think is what you're primarily talking out there, um, sign or other structure not intended to support those facilities. City may impose reasonable requirements to accommodate the particular design appearance or intended purpose of the structure, so I think that will help on decorative poles. The other comment I would have is the triggering for new support structures, which would be new poles, that is in the zoning code changes, which I believe would require a special use permit, not only in rural, or excuse me, residential districts, but also as well as national register historic districts. So if there is a truly historic district, the council, it would come back to the council for some regulation there, might not be able to deny, but you would be able to impose some regulation on it there. So that's in the, the back of the ordinance in the chapter 155, 100, uh, ordinance changes for the zoning code.
Okay, counsel, can we get a motion to put this on the floor? At least we can move on. Do we have, we don't have a motion. Okay, Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, second by Councilmember Brock. That motion is before the body. Uh, is there further, uh, discussion to the motion? Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the item, uh, this motion, excuse me, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. Then we have a second one before, uh, resolution for authorizing publication of a summary of the ordinance amendment. Uh, five votes is required, uh, to do this. This so we can basically summarize it. We have to print it in full, uh, in our publications, in our legal publications. Councilmember, uh, Vaughn makes that motion to approve, second by Councilmember Foltz. That motion is before the body. Any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails.
There's also a third action on the co-location agreement, which is effectively the lease.
The third action is a co-location agreement? Dan, can you, uh, explain that one for us?
Sure. It's basically a lease between the city and these providers that, uh, would govern the terms by which they can put these facilities on poles owned by the city.
Okay. Okay. To that subject matter, is there a motion? Councilmember Foltz makes that motion to approve, second by Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Lund, did you have a question? Please.
Sure, it's effectively a lease between the city and the wireless provider that would govern the terms by which they can place their facilities on city-owned poles. So city-owned lights, poles, things like that would not apply to things like Excel Energy poles, which are also common throughout the city. This is what allows the city to collect rent.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, that motion is before the body. Any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay. Next is number five on the contracts of public hearing, uh, well number seven rehabilitation project. Nick, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. Uh, tonight for the council's consideration, we have a resolution to award a contract on our well number seven maintenance project. This is something that we do with each of our wells on about a ten-year cycle. It requires extracting all the mechanical parts out of the well tube that goes down some several hundred feet into the ground to pump water up and into our system. Uh, these are the parts that are out of sight, out of mind, and unless we pull them out of there and take a close look at that, along with all the other mechanical, uh, components of the well, every so often, uh, we don't truly know how it's wearing and tearing. So, routine program, um, we got four bids last Tuesday for this work, and the lowest of those being from trout companies, uh, about ninety-nine thousand dollars. I will note that the type of contract that we have with well maintenance is essentially an à la carte sort of arrangement, where they give us prices for any of the possible sorts of activities they would do. That doesn't mean we will do one hundred percent of those activities. Typically, we are not, uh, getting even close to that. Uh, for example, we've, we've done three of these maintenance projects in the last, uh, five years, and, uh, we'll get in the range of sixty to seventy thousand dollars of expenses for this sort of project, and that's what we expect in this case as well. Uh, so, uh, again, the, uh, recommendation from staff is to award the contract to trout companies in the amount of ninety-nine thousand four hundred dollars. We'd start work on this, uh, either at the very tail end of 2017 here or very beginning of 2018, and then it'll last a couple of months and we'll have the well back ready for service in the spring. Turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks.
All right. Thank you, uh, Nick, for that presentation, counsel. This item is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember, uh, Leifeld makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We'll go to community development, items four and five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John?
I'm just gonna call up a brief presentation here while, uh, you're with me for just a moment. We're looking at a subject tonight I know that the council is all very familiar with, and that is the redevelopment of the Hudson facility and the transformation to Great River Landing. And, uh, I'll go through some updates that, uh, we've had today and, uh, the discussion that we're looking to have tonight on the property itself. Now, within your packet, uh, originally as it was presented, we had within there a resolution for, uh, amendment of the purchase and development agreement. As you know, we have an existing purchase and development agreement with Confluence Development for the property itself. We've been actively working to prepare amendments to that application so that we can transfer the property. It's been a desire from, uh, the council and from city staff to be able to transfer the property and begin development as soon as we can on this. Uh, as you may recall, uh, earlier this afternoon, we did submit to you the final, the version of the first amendment of the purchase and development agreement. And given the timing of the amendment details, the council tonight may opt to delay action until January 2nd, 2018. We did want to preserve the ability tonight to be able to present some of the findings that we have, the changes within the purchase and development agreement, and also to run through the project itself. This has been something that has been going on for quite a long time here, and, uh, wanted to provide some context and also some of the changes that are being proposed as we move forward. First thing I have before you is where we're located at, which I think most people know, which is the, uh, Hudson Development, which is a four-acre site, a hundred thousand square foot building on the Mississippi River downtown. We've been the proud owners of this building for about seven years now, and this is what it looked like in the past. We've done, we've done extensive work on the property over the last couple of years. You may recall, this is what the property looked like to begin with. It was over two-hundred thousand square feet. The new bridge goes right through here. Twenty thousand square foot piece was taken off here. Forty-eight thousand square foot piece taking off here. As you take a look at what the river trail used to look like, this is what the river trail looked like going into the facility and towards the old bridge. You could see that the building itself came right up to it. One of the objectives that we've had collectively over the years is to remove the industrial development along the river in downtown Hastings into redevelopment into green space and active areas. We've been very successful for what we've done over the years, particularly in the eastern part of the downtown area, where you may recall that we had rendering plants and oil tanks in those areas and, and, uh, the tanks that we had just up towards Lock and Dam Road, that those are all gone right now. This itself is the last piece along the Mississippi River. So what have we been planning over the years? The Heart of Hastings Plan we did fifteen years ago had a lot of value into looking at what we wanted to do with the, with the site. The interesting part of this plan, which is now fifteen, sixteen years old, is how much it resembles what is being brought forward today. Uh, we have the preservation of the historic Hudson Building, we have public open space, we have a promenade area, and we have some, uh, potential here for future development to the west of the building. Those items are being preserved as we move forward with this plan tonight. Little bit of the project history, we, as we said, we've gone through this project now for about seven years, uh, as we've, uh, we've looked at the, the changes on it. This is an interesting picture up here. This is the demolish to the nineteen seventy-four edition, that Tippa building near the river. You could see the two bridges there. Provide some context of, of how we've been working on this project here. When we were first faced with this project, what we wanted to do was to create something that would be an attraction as people moved across the new bridge into downtown Hastings, something that would be an opportunity, a destination point for people to stop. And that was a, a key objective towards, uh, redevelopment of this. One of the things that we were uncertain of as we first entered into this project was whether we were gonna keep the building or whether we were gonna demolish the building and have a development site. One of the things that we did early on is we went through a reuse study of the property, and with the public's help, we were, we determined that what we wanted to see on that property was a rehabilitation of the historic aspect of that building and a mixed-use development, something that would be commercial, something that would have some residential. The term banquet facility came up many, many times and is still a part of the development as we move forward. So with that, we did a lot of environmental investigation, a lot of environmental cleanup. We demolished portions of the building. We took out old soils, we took out asbestos and, and other contaminants within the building itself. And, uh, we're very fortunate with that, that we've received, uh, a lot of grant funds to assist with the redevelopment of the property as well as the environmental rehabilitation of it. With Confluence Development, what we did is we entered into an original preliminary agreement with them in 2014. You may recall, uh, 2013, 2014, we looked at a bunch of different scenarios from different developers as to how best to develop the property. What we've, what we came across with Confluence Development was the confidence that they could do a quality job on the project, uh, from their experience in dealing locally with, with Pat Regan and the experience with Schoolhouse Square and, and Bill Whalen and his experience in rehabilitation of historic structures in downtown and riverfront development, primarily in Louisville, Kentucky. So we entered into a preliminary purchase agreement with them in 2014. We, uh, continued to work with them. In 2016, we had a purchase and development agreement. What that was, the purchase and development agreement set the table for transfer of the property. And, uh, there were certain key measures in there, approval of plans, historic preservation approval, environmental contamination remediation, were things that we needed to work towards in order to transfer the property. As we continued to work through those, we came through some complexities. Some of the things that came up were, were more complex, took more time than we anticipated to occur. Primarily on the environmental end of it, the, uh, the crawl space areas within the building itself, dealing with some of those contaminations, uh, underneath the floorboards themselves was a lot more time, time-consuming than necessary. We were fortunate to receive an EPA grant of six-hundred thousand dollars, but with that, there came some strings attached that we needed to do some more cultural investigations and other research prior to the execution of those grant funding. Uh, so some of those items just took longer than we anticipated to do on the property itself. And so we had blown past the dates, frankly, of some of the original, uh, dates of the purchase and development agreement. So we've been working diligently with the development team to be able to provide an amendment to that agreement itself. And that's what I have before you tonight, within the, uh, the larger thicker packet, as well as, uh, the, the summary, which I'll go through. You may recall that in the summer of this year, we went down, we met on-site with Confluence Development to share some of their concept plans, and we also had a, uh, special workshop that we held in November to talk about the, the plan development itself. The plan continues to move forward as seen here with the rehabilitation of the Hudson Building into sixty-seven hotel rooms, twenty-two apartment units, twenty thousand square foot of, uh, retail, uh, commercial banquet facility space within the property. Rehabilitation of the riverfront is shown here, some surface parking, and then the construction of a parking garage of a hundred and nineteen stalls, which is the site of the existing First National Bank Building. This kind of gives some views here of, of what the project would look like upon execution and the parking garage itself. So what are we looking at here? What are, what are the changes that we are contemplating tonight with this first amendment to the purchase and development agreement? I've laid out some of the, the key aspects for you within the memo itself, and I'll go through those in detail here during the presentation. One of these is the dates, the completion dates, the commencement dates. What we have within the purchase and development agreement amended is that we would close on the property by January 22nd, 2018. So about one month from today, we would close on the property. Confluence would submit building plans for the property by August 1st of 2018. Now, I'll point that out, that August 1st date was a little bit later than we had originally comprehended. From talking to Confluence, that date recognizes their need to obtain historic tax credit part two approval prior to finalizing their construction documents for the building permit. So they're requesting additional time to put their historic tax credit information into place and then to submit for their building permit. So building permit for the site would be August 1st. Start of construction would be thirty days after issuance of that permit, and the substantial completion date right now would be December 15th, 2019. So a couple of changes from what we had previously discussed. Number one, that later date for submittal plans for building permit, and two, the substantial completion date, uh, being later than what was originally comprehended on that. Um, so Confluence has, has said that they will work a, as best as they can to provide for a, a great deal of completion by the end of 2018 on that. When you take a look at the, uh, the submittal date for the building permit, if they were to go to August 1st and, and the limited time period they have in the fall, it's, it's unclear as to how much construction could take place within 2018 there, given those dates. Uh, one of the key aspects there too is that with the completed improvements, the assessed valuation prior to January 1st of 2019 would likely be less than what we originally anticipated. The key aspect of that is our bond payment of about two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars that we anticipated making one more time, we may end up making a substantial portion of that again. So that is a key point that I wanted to bring forward tonight, that the, the construction timeframe being extended, uh, may have repercussions on, uh, the bond payment because of the, the amount of the building that would be improved itself. Under environmental obligations itself, uh, we had discussed this in our, in our joint meeting a couple of weeks ago. We have really two items of environmental remediation that we would be responsible for after closing of the property. One would be the installation, excuse me, of this vapor intrusion mitigation system. This is that active system that vents out the soil vapor, uh, through HVAC systems. What we had discussed at the, uh, at our workshop was the cost of that system and also providing some other portions of that requested by the developer, in particular the, uh, the removal of floor joists and the creation of a new floor and the additional of funds to do that. So what this environmental obligation comprehends, the seven-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, contemplates the full installation of that vapor system, the modifications that were recently, uh, needed for it, as well as that additional work for the floor joist removal and the, uh, the new floor for the facility. Uh, the second item there would be some ceiling of contaminated wood joists and ceiling. There's some PCB contaminants embedded within the wood portion and portions of the building itself. We've gone through and done some sampling. This would, uh, provide funding in order to remediate that upon construction of the building itself. Uh, under pre-closing obligations, a lot of the pre-closing obligations that were in the original, original agreement have been eliminated, uh, prior to, uh, to transfer of the property. One would be the shipful approval for, uh, historic tax credits, approval of construction plans, and full, full remediation of environmental contaminants. So Confluence has, uh, has ceded that they will not, they will not be seeking those items as part of the pre, part of transfer of the building. Those would be completed after transfer was to occur on that one. So one of the things I did want to point out with the contingencies being waived there, the result is with this later construction date, uh, the developer could exercise the contingency later on and effectively cancel the deal after closing but before initiation of construction. What you have here is you've a cou- couple of target dates. You have the, uh, the transfer of the property, that January date, and then you also have the submittal plans for a building permit. So, uh, say for example, the city was to close on the property by, by the 22nd, property's transferred, Confluence continues their due diligence, they come up to August, prior to August 1st, something was to happen where, uh, the project, they chose not to move forward the project. They could exercise that contingency at that time and we could get the property back. So I just wanted to make the council aware- So I just wanted to make the council aware that with the extension of that, that time period, that is a, a risk that, uh, is involved within the property itself. I've also have some more information here, mortgages and liens on the properties itself. Uh, one of the things that with this extended time period, we want to make sure that any construction or any improvements that was to occur, uh, during that period between now, between closing of the property and potential, uh, building permit, uh, that there, we would not encounter, encumber any sort of, uh, construction that could be a lien situation if the property was to come back to us. One of the things we also had authorization of is the parking ramp structure grant. I remember we had discussed earlier this year that the parking ramp grant we received from Metropolitan Council of about 1.5 million dollars. Originally was planned for the Hudson property itself, wanted to be transferred to the First National Bank property. We, uh, we have received the documents from Metropolitan Council to provide for that transfer and the amendment itself contemplates that. So that are, those are some of the major items for the, for the first amendment to the purchase and development agreement. Now that development agreement document has a number of subsections to it. Uh, I'm going to highlight a couple of those as we move forward here. One of those is, uh, an amendment to the public use agreement. The public use agreement is that agreement for the use of public land, the parkland along the riverfront itself. There will be a revision there, uh, to incorporate the revised site plan as well as a legal description. Uh, you may recall a couple of weeks ago, we, we, uh, took action to, uh, on the final plat to recognize some changes within the legal description on that property. And another key aspect of this would be the parking use and maintenance agreement. You may recall that back on November twentieth, we did have some discussion on the parking ramp, the hundred and nineteen space ramp across the street, what obligations the city would have, what obligations the developer would have. And as we go through that here, uh, the, what the, what the per- parking use and maintenance agreement shows is that it would be privately owned with a public easement for parking within the entire private structure. Developer would undertake the structural maintenance of the structure. And then within the structure, there'd be a subdivision really between the lower portion along Second Street, the thirty-six stalls, and the upper portion, uh, on the second floor, which is eighty-three stalls. On the eighty-three stalls of the upper level, the city would provide for routine maintenance costs of that, which are termed to be seventy percent of the, the total maintenance costs. Our best estimate on that, based on a hundred dollar a stall, would be about eighty-three hundred dollars annually for that aspect of it. The bottom, and there would not be any prohibition or closures within that top portion of the ramp itself. That's another key aspect that was discussed in part of this agreement. On the lower portion, that thirty-six units or thirty-six parking spaces that would be adjacent to Second Street, Confluence would, uh, would retain responsibilities for routine maintenance of those spaces as well as the, um, the ability for, uh, potential closures that could be up to thirty days a year, five days a month. Again, that would be restricted to the bottom level. The upper portion of eighty-three spots would not be affected by that. So that's kind of the highlights of some of the agreements as we're moving forward here. So really what happens from here is upon transfer of the building, we would also have some other approvals that would need to go forward to the council and, and various commissions relating to the parking structure, getting the site plan approval on that, on the Hudson building landscape and grading approval, and then construction plans on the Hudson building itself. I also wanted to provide to you just a, a snapshot of the financial analysis, financial capacity, really where we're at on the project itself. We anticipate that this environmental remediation of the site is going to cost about 2.7 million dollars when finished. And to date, this provides an update of what we have, uh, for funding of it. We've had about eight hundred and thirty thousands grant, grants awarded to date, hedra payments of about six hundred. We have some grants in progress as well. We also have about four hundred thousand dollars in additional monies there. And these would be monies that would be paid out, uh, from city funds or hedra funds, excuse me. Right now, the hedra cash balance is about 1.1 million dollars with much of, of the six hundred thousand dollars being covered in prior years already to 2017. So this, these payments here are, are not necessarily a reflection of the, of 2017 numbers, but a compilation of, of funds, uh, that have been spent by hedra over the years on the project. Uh, we anticipate right now, if we're successful in grant funding, that we would fund an additional three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars on this project. If that was to occur, if we were to get the grants that we are applying for, uh, could, we would conservatively project the cash balance for hedra to be around six hundred thousand dollars for this project. Right now, we have three grant opportunities, two of them we've applied for, one of them we've heard back that, uh, they have denied, one of them we're in process, and one we plan to apply for in January. And so we'll, we'll continue to, uh, to move forward with those applications. And, um, I think that would do it for my, my presentation and my summary tonight. I know I have put a lot of information forward to you and a lot of it late in the day here. So I'm certainly available for any questions that you may have here. And, uh, Pat Regan of Confluence Development is also here as well, if you have any specific questions for him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that was a, you know, much-needed detail. So, uh, I appreciate you going through that, John. Appreciate that summary. It's a very complex project. Uh, council, you'll see on our agenda tonight, uh, four and five requiring action. Uh, and, uh, I was discussing this with staff earlier that, uh, I think we'd be best served if we'd not vote on that tonight because there's a lot of information that we just got. A lot of this, uh, as John indicated, were kind of wrapped up, uh, earlier this afternoon. Uh, so I think it's, it's fair that, uh, the council and the public in general get a chance to absorb this information that's before us and have this, uh, before us in our first council meeting in January, which I believe is January second.
Correct.
So, uh, we won't be voting on this tonight. Uh, we'll put, uh, we'll, but tonight we have, uh, Pat here. Uh, we have an opportunity to, to, uh, to respond, uh, even though I know much of this information is new. And so council, I'm going to open it up for discussion. Council, any, uh, questions? Councilmember Brock.
John, I just have a question about what's the worst-case scenario? So what if none of the grants get funded of the three that we applied for? What is the amount that is going to come out of hedra and what will the remaining balance be?
Sure. The grant total that we'd be applying for would be about five hundred thousand dollars here. So when we, uh, if we were to add that five hundred thousand dollars to, uh, the, the cash balance itself, uh, we would probably be in a, the couple hundred thousand dollar range for cash balance in hedra.
Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, can you explain to us why the Met Council denied our, our grant request?
Sure. On that one, we just learned of that on Friday, and I haven't had an opportunity to get a lot of detail from them. I, I know that they had a minimum threshold for scoring that they've used and we did not meet that, but I will question them as to anything specific to that.
Uh, I'd like to ask a question of Pat. Pat, can I speak to you for a second? Thank you, uh, Mr. Regan for being here tonight. We appreciate it and, uh, the project that you're bringing forward. I know, I think we all share the excitement to, to see the fruition of this project. But I wanted to ask you, you know, uh, one of the proposals tonight is that, uh, you know, first of all, I'm very glad to see we have a closing date, uh, identified, January twenty-second. That, we haven't had that before. So I'm very glad to see that. But, uh, as part of this, uh, we see a submittal of plans with building permit by August first. Uh, I understand because of the earlier agreements that we had, purchase agreement, that the site approvals were going to take place before, uh, any closing date, we've waived that. And I think we're all in agreement that we should do that as we move forward. But, uh, one of, some of the language that I'm concerned about is the, you know, uh, reverting the, the, the building back to the city. And I just want to get from you what the commitment is from Confluence about moving forward on this project because tho- those are kind of, like, kind of language that I get concerned about. So Pat, if you can talk, you know, address that the best you can.
We are fully committed. We have done a lot of work, uh, on our plans. When we were asked most recently for this amendment to commit to a, a date for the, uh, the plan submittal, uh, we had to take into consideration that in Minnesota, the shipple requires fully developed construction plans. That actually was a, a surprise. We did learn this a year or two ago now, but to the Kentucky partners that I have, uh, in Kentucky, you can submit a concept plan, much like we've already submitted to the city and like we tried to submit to the Minnesota shipple, and they reject those plans asking for a fully developed set of construction plans. Basically the same level of plans we will be submitting to the city for our building permit. We can, we can complete those plans by April or May of 2018, but we can't say what the shipple will tell us about those plans. They've already given us some negative reaction on the, the concept plans we submitted to them early on in this process. So if, if we only had to go through the city, we'd be confident in, in telling the city that we could have the plans to you. And maybe we can sub, can submit them concurrently to both the city and the shipple, but it's going to be contingent on the ship, the shippos, uh, they'll give us a conditional approval. That's what we're looking for from them. And that, they have a certain number of days, I think it's, is it sixty days, by which they must, uh, by law respond to our submittal. And, uh, so that's the reason for the, us asking for the, uh, the plan submittal contingency date to be as late as August. We don't, uh, we hope that's not the date, but again, that's up to the shipple. Our commitment to the project is still a hundred percent. Uh, if, if the shipple doesn't approve this project, we'll be back here with a plan that doesn't involve the shipple. I can tell you that. What that will look like, I, I can't tell you because we haven't spent any time studying that, but I know some things that cost us extra money, like rehabbing windows instead of putting new windows in. There might be some different treatment to the exterior of the building rather than having to clean up and replace every nook and cranny and of, of every brick on the whole building. I don't know that we would go to that extent to, to rehab the outside of the building. We would have insulation in the building like we want, but they won't let us have. So I can tell you that we're committed to finishing this project. We have not, uh, we've act, we're, we're more excited because of the, the, uh, what we've learned and who we've brought onboard to, to operate a hotel. We've got a good hotel operating partner with a, a letter of intent. They just spent, uh, all last week down in Louisville, going through all of the, the Whalen partners and the city, uh, the city people down in, in all their projects in Louisville and they're, they're back, they're walking on air, so excited about what we can do with this project. Uh, I'd also say that if we can, uh, what we're asking, what you're contemplating here tonight and going to contemplate in early January now, that, in my mind, that actually speeds the process up. We are accepting some contingencies that we're, that we, we're waiving some contingencies that are in the existing plan. We think we get a better handle on controlling the schedule, on the completion of the, what's really held this up, and that's the environmental, the work especially under the crawl spaces. If, if the, if this a, a amendment goes through as it's proposed, and we've had a lot of hard work done by Mr. Fleagle and our legal counsel and the city staff on the details on that, I think this will speed up the completion of the, what's the environmental problems that are holding us up. We're going to take a lot of responsibility for taking over that schedule in this scenario, which we're happy about. And I also think that, uh, we, if we get approval to spend the Met Council funds on the, on the parking ramp, and I've met, the last thing we did before we came down tonight was meet with Greg Stotko and our construction planning, we should be able to have a complete set of plans for the parking ramp in the city's hands. That doesn't have to go through the shipple. We should have that in your hands in three months. That'd be coming right into the spring where we could begin the, the demolition of the, of the, uh, 119 East Second Street property. And, uh, because of the way that's going to be constructed with, uh, concrete pillars, we can, we can do the engineering of that. It's, it's not a high-finished, uh, construction project. We think we could have that completed in three to four months. And the parking ramp should be open easily before the end of 2018. And that should be good for everybody downtown right away. That's on private property. That parking use agreement, uh, we intended to mirror our use of the, uh, of the West Park area. That's why we've got the five days and the thirty days in there. For us, that helps us create a VIP experience for people who may be booking rooms and booking the event center at the, at the hotel facility. We think that's important to, to really bring in some, some wow and some big events with big crowds. We understand the concern about us not tying up that entire parking ramp, uh, so that we think we came to a fair compromise on, on how to manage what's really a public facility that's on private property. And we know that's unique and, uh, but we're comfortable that what is proposed here for that facility is, is going to be good for all concerned. And, uh, so really, our commitment hasn't changed. This actually speeds up the process in our mind. Uh, we're excited. We've got a lot of interest in, in, uh, in the details. We want to frankly control the publicity on, on a lot of the details of the hotel and who the people are. We've had people making regular inquiries of us as to the, how to get involved in the invent space and how to get involved in the restaurant space, but we, we know enough to know we have to do things in a certain order. And, uh, we, we stand here grateful, still grateful, still excited, and, uh, still committed to make this happen.
Pat, is there any scenario that you would envision that, you know, it does say in here that the property could be reverted back to the city if things don't happen by August first? Um, if that were to occur, is there any scenario that you could envision that that would happen and there would not be a Confluence involvement in this project?
No. No, sir.
Thank you. Is there any further, uh, discussion or questions? Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just to say that your concerns are, are my concerns about, um, you know, this clause that, you know, and when I heard John say this, it really turned my stomach that, uh, that Confluence could back out of this. Uh, and then we're right back to square one again after all of this investment that we've gone through. And then what do we do? And I, you know, I appreciate, uh, Pat, what you're saying here, that, uh, you and your company are committed to, uh, to see this whole thing through. And, and I appreciate that very much. I, I do have, um, just a couple of questions. The, uh, the, the, uh, parcelling out of the property into three different lots, I guess we would call them, right? Yeah. Uh, it, it, I, do you anticipate, I mean, I, you know, we, we saw that parking lot that's, uh, to the west of the building, uh, on the north side of Second Street. You know, pie in the sky or whatever. Do you foresee maybe parcelling or selling those portions, those two additional lots for other development then? Or is it your future plan to keep everything under your auspices then?
It is our plan be, to create those lots so that we could have a separate lot that we could develop for future housing on the west side of the hotel or to expand the hotel if the demand would, would, uh, in, indicate that that would be a good prospect for us. That's one of the reasons we like, we, we really like the idea of moving the parking ramp over to the bank site so that we preserve what is probably the, the more valuable develop, developable- developable land with good views to the river, but still not impacting the public park. It preserves, the other idea with that, those separate lots was to preserve the, the public park aspect in perpetuity for that to always remain a, a public use facility close to the river.
The, thank you. The, the other thing to just comment about is the, I'm still kind of uncomfortable with the private land-public ramp situation, because it is so unusual, as you said. And I've picked up comments from people, especially the business owners downtown, you know, when they're finding out that there will be, what was it, five days?
Maximum of five days per month?
Five days per month.
Thirty days in any one year?
Yeah. Yeah, on, and that's, that's not on average, that's five days within a calendar month, right? No more than that. So you couldn't, you couldn't bank two days from June and use those two for July, and then you have seven and so forth. So stay at a maximum of five per month then. And I, I've explained it, as you have, because my, my parents were in the restaurant business and the same kind of a thing, if you're running an event, a special event banquet, whatever then, valet parking, you know, VIP parking, whatever you want to call it, is something that enters, enters into the whole thing. And I'm mentioning this because, again, there was sensitivity about this on the part of the downtown, oh my gosh, is he going to charge for the nights that we're running the car shows, you know, for example, or if there's a big concert down at the pavilion or something like that. So, you know, just to perhaps elaborate on that just a little bit more, so that the public is understanding that it is something that would be tied directly to your business and not, not really anything tied to any other kind of event that would be going on downtown.
That, that is our, our concept as well, is that these, these lower-level stalls in that lower parking ramp, they're going to be available to the public three hundred and thirty-five days a year, no matter what. They're going to be available to us to attract, hopefully, a big event or a big user to our hotel that I'm sure will help the rest of downtown, as will those ninety-nine stalls that are being created by this development. They will always be available to the public. So I think the net positive for everybody is really a net positive. We, we want to try to bring something that has a, a regional attraction and, and without the, the ability to give the Board of Directors of the Bus Operators Association, who's, I keep using them as, as an example, but we're coming after them. They're going to have their convention in this hotel. And we're going to probably need to give the Board of Directors of that group, which I'm not on anymore, VIP parking and maybe a hotel room or two. And they're going to come with a hundred or a hundred and fifty people, and they're going to spend three, four days downtown Hastings. And the people who make the decision for that group are going to get a little bit of special treatment through, via those thirty-six stalls. Furthermore, if they need, if they need cover for the vehicles or the goods that they want to display as part of their convention or their show, we will have that covered, but still outdoor parking space available for them. It could be, it could be a regional car show or an auction with cars that are worth a couple hundred thousand dollars each. Wouldn't that be nice to have down along the river for a week or so? But if you have a two hundred thousand dollar Packard, and I know a guy who does, he's going to want some protection for that. And, and that's what we're, it's going to take to attract that kind of, of an affair to the whole downtown, to the whole town, so.
Well, having, having taken, I believe, three tours now through the building, inside and out, underneath and above, and, you know, getting a real microscopic view of the whole thing. What excites me is the banquet facility, certainly the hotels, certainly everything else that's going on. But what I've been telling the public is that this is going to be what you call a destination facility. Having had two daughters who got married, and when they got engaged, were asked, when are you going to have the wedding? And they said, oh, we'll kind of see, you know, sometime in a year, year and a half. Then they went looking for banquet facilities, and the cart was running the horse, if I can kind of repeat that. But the wedding was therefore centered around the banquet availability. And there's a huge call for these kinds of facilities. And, and not just weddings, I, I see many conferences, you know, like you're saying, and so forth. We were just down, Cheryl Holmes, piano instructor here in the Prescott-Hastings area. We were in Red Wing yesterday, I think for the tenth year in a row now, piano recital for her students, about a hundred and fifty people in the banquet room, two pianos, lovely afternoon. And why, I, I've been sitting there for the last two, three years saying, why do we have to get in the cars and go all the way down to Red Wing when we could be here someplace in Hastings? And I'm just saying to myself, Confluence, Confluence. You know, I can see that recital program taking place there in addition to many, many other things as well.
There was a day when I was there with our kids. I know exactly what you speak of.
Yeah. Cheryl Holmes, she's the H in M in H, if people don't know. But it's, it's going to be a good marriage, I think. I, you know, based on, on your track record and, again, having been down to Louisville and taken a cook's tour of everything that was down there with my wife, you know, and I came back and I wrote the paper and I said, you know, one word, wow, you know? And if, if we can come fifty percent as close as what's going on down there, it'll be Goosebumps City. So I, I really look forward to this. I, I guess I'll believe it when I see it. I've been asking for two years, when are we going to have a closing date? John Hensman's shaking his head. He understands, he knows how I've been, you know, asking for this. And the mayor knows this, he knows that I've been asking for it. And I understand that, and again, SHIPPO, the acronym for the State Historic Preservation Commission, that, that's who we're dealing with. And it, it is remarkable, the amount of patience that your group has had, you know, trying to deal with this entity. Very disappointing that this has taken as long as it, as it has, but really through no fault of yours. And with that, I will yield the floor. Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Foltz?
Honor, thank you. I'll try to be brief. Just, this is the first opportunity that we've had to review these documents, and so just trying to quickly peruse them. And so maybe it, it would be nice if we had an opportunity, because I know we're getting kind of tired, yeah, to talk later, but I'm, as excited I am, as I am about what you're doing, I'm a little concerned about the, the parking ramp maintenance agreement. I'm looking at this, it looks like the city would be subject to picking up seventy percent of the costs of maintaining the structure. And then we would have to provide the general liability insurance over the, over it for the next thirty-nine years. And, and it's a heck of a deal when, you know, it was a grant that's being provided, the million and a half to be able to erect the structure. And so the only monies that have been put into it then have been the acquisition of the land property itself, the First National Bank, what is the first, yeah, First National Bank building site, which I don't have any idea how much that cost. But it just seems very lopsided, that after thirty-nine years, that the property is yours or whoever, you know, you know, has the property thirty-nine years from now, and the city has nothing. And so I just find that that is a concerning use of taxpayer dollars. And so I don't have the answers to that right now. I'd like to think about it more, but I just believe that, that, that's concerning about what is, what does, what do the taxpayers get out of that in the end?
I'll just give you something to counterweight, just to give it some thought.
Sure, no, that's fine, yep.
You know, when we discussed this early on, we thought, you know, do we have to do the maintenance of the whole thing? You know, we do maintenance in city parking lots all over the city of Hastings, which makes it different, is this one's privately owned.
Yeah.
But the public is pri, but the parking is public. The eighty-three spots on the upper floor will always be public. Their request for the five days to cloat will, does not affect the upper level. So the parking that's available, that will be able to the public twenty-four, seven in this ramp will always be available. We did a calculation and among city staff says, well, if we go in there with our crews and go in there, it'd be about a hundred dollars a stall to, to maintain it on a year-round basis, it's about, about seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a year. No, excuse me, eight thousand dollars a year, eight thousand dollars a year. So, you know, we felt, well, you know, we, we, we could have our crew go in there and that, which is, which is problematic because of the structure. Or since Confluence is maintaining the lower half, which is the reason why it's seventy, because we're just doing the upper half, they're going to hire out the contractor, they're going to worry about the snow plowing of the structure and stuff, but the city's participation in lieu of our city staff doing it would help provide for the public spaces that would be provided twenty-four, seven to have that snow cleared. So it was, it was advantage to the city. This was some, one of some of the things that we negotiated out that you see here.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I understand what you're saying.
That's the counterbalance.
Yep, yep. If staff could actually provide in writing what the dollar amount that will be necessary out of the city's operating budget to be able to maintain this structure, I think that would be rather useful, rather than just saying a hundred dollars a stall, because it's more than.
That was their calculation.
Oh, right, but what does that mean? Okay, so a hundred times, you know, whatever.
Eighty-three spots.
Eighty-three spots.
Yeah.
Eighty-three hundred dollars a year.
Right.
Oh, okay, that's not so bad.
Right. So that was the calculation that was brought from my staff.
If I could add to that, we did, we, the city did their independent study. We talked to some independent experts who design and operate parking ramps, and we both came back with a number that was within a thousand dollars of one another of what it should cost to maintain this, you know, on the regular maintenance, the thirty-nine years, council member, is related to the, the, the depreciable life of a structure that's built out of this kind of material. So in thirty-nine years, we can probably count on this structure needing to be structurally rehabilitated. We also have requested the right to develop on top of the public stalls. So we, because we own the land underneath, we would like to someday, under a best-case scenario, build something else on top of the public stalls. So that's part of our thinking and part of our motivation and part of the reason why we decided to contribute a few hundred thousand in value to a public parking ramp, because we hope that in the future, we can even add to the vibrancy in the tax base and the developability of the site by building on top of those eighty-three public stalls. And that's a long way down the road, and there'll be a lot of questions to be asked and answered before we ever got to that, but it is part of the concept here, and it's part of the agreement, and it's part of the upside for everybody.
And I think it's important to point out that Confluence is picking up the structural maintenance of the, of the facility, not the city.
Okay, good.
Ours is just the plowing of the snow.
Because I was going to say, it's more than that for a hundred dollars a year to maintain that building.
Confluence is paying for the structural maintenance.
That's our response, the structural, to keep the thing standing and safe is, is our baby.
Councilmember Foltz, you'll like this, how's the electric charge stations we requested?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I was going to ask about that.
So we made sure we put that request forward, council member, on your advice.
Thank you.
Is there any further, I know the evening's getting long, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to mention one other concept about the, the Hudson Building itself and the construction timing, because that's a big concern of everybody here, ours too. And I'd like us all, if we could, to think in terms of this building opening in phases. The hotel rooms take quite a bit more to build than the banquet facility, for example. So we don't know exactly what that looks like, it depends on the market and the demands that we, but if we can open up the banquet facility and generate revenue in 2018, you really don't want to open a hotel this time of year, is what all the experts tell me. You're better off doing it in the summer or the fall at the latest, otherwise wait till the spring. And so that we, because of this extra three, four months of the SHIPPO approval, and you extrapolate the real time it takes to build this out, that's why the, some of the dates are showing there, but that hopefully won't preclude us to getting maybe the park done and the, and the event space, and there may be portions of the building we'd be asking the city to help us op, open up in phases. And that could help mitigate the, the bond factor, which we understand is a, is a critical item here for the city. So that, that could help.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Harrison. Mike, thank you for being here, and Pat, we appreciate that.
Thank you for your continued support.
We'll have this before the council on the January second meeting, look in this more and look for some votes at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, council, we'll go to our administration, the last item tonight, resolutions regarding to the nineteen, or sixteen, nineteen, 2018 final budget levy and special levy. Staff, Melanie?
Your Honor and council, I will be brief. You have before you two actions, two resolutions, setting and approving the final HEDRA, HRA special levy, as well as a 2018 final budget and final levy. These items have been before you a number of times over the last six, eight months. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but would stand for a vote as well. Thank you.
Okay, let's take before us the 2018 budget. Council, we have that resolution before us. What's your, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn, motion to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is before the body. Is there a discussion to that motion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Yeah, I just got to give a quick thanks to all of my colleagues here, because I think, I think we got good input from everyone here, and I think we represented the residents very well. Real, real credit goes to the staff, though, because we did ask for some innovation, and we wanted them some efficiencies. And I think they gave us options when we started to look at the capital items that they wanted to bring to us. So I think this budget allows us to, to maintain our assets that we have in the community and the service that we provide. So I think I'm happy that, what number we came up with.
Thank you, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Appreciate that. Is there any further discussion to the motion before the body? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, it has been a tremendous learning curve this last year. And so I thank staff for all their patience in providing really useful information as we've gone along. And just moving forward, I would like to see further development of the CIP, so that was more thoroughly fleshed out as to really what's the five-year vision, so that we can understand we really just looked primarily at the next year, and there's very little that was said after that. It's my understanding that we have a facilities condition assessment that's been provided by a vendor in the last year or so. And I would really like to see what those recommendations were that were provided and how it is that that will be worked into the CIP, so we can get a better understanding of that as we're moving forward, how do we maintain our structures? And then last, I'm, I am concerned that when I was looking
And then last, I'm, I am concerned that when I was looking through the packets, the packet this, this evening, I didn't actually see the final budget that in, in our packet. And so then I realized there was a little notation that the proposed budget was online available. And so I pulled that up and started to look at it. And I just, I find it concerning that we're being asked to approve the twenty-eighteen budget without it being a final budget. And I, I guess I haven't seen other governmental bodies in the past actually do that, where you pass a budget but it's not a final budget. And so perhaps that's a precedence that's been conducted in the city in the past, but I, I wasn't aware of it. And so I was just looking for some advisement as to what has been the practice and, and how does that work if we're not approving a final budget and it's still a moving target, I guess? Where, what are we doing then? We're approving an amount? In general assumptions about what's going to be within the various departments? And that's going to be finalized some other time, I guess?
Melanie, you want to explain that?
Just looking for, how does this work?
Sure.
I'd be happy to. Your Honor and council, the financials are final. The financials are what is, is in the budget. When you looked online, those, those numbers were the budget. What is not quite final is some of the narrative aspects of it. So that's why we have the draft notation on there. The financials are what the, what has been presented and what is out there on the website. The, the budget itself, the document itself should be finalized here. I mentioned this to you earlier, it's probably by the end of the year, first of the year, January second, I would expect you would have a paper budget available for you.
I, I use the, you know, the online version as well when I was studying the budget before tonight, so. And I felt, I felt informed when I looked at it, so.
Councilmember Leifeld? Thank you, Your Honor. That, Councilmember Foltz, takes me to a secondary question. How would a citizen or a resident get a copy of this preliminary budget without having access online? How would, can they come to City Hall? Can they come and request it? Do they get it at the front desk? Does it cost money?
Yeah, we would make copies of all of that available, absolutely.
No cost?
Yeah, I don't think we would, I, no.
Yeah, I, I just want to make it clear that this is, this information is out there and available. And so if any citizen wanted to come to City Hall and get a copy of it, they would get a copy of it. There's nothing secret about it. It's not locked up in a room somewhere. One of the things that helps us is, once we pass the final budget tonight, that basically also gives staff the opportunity to put it in its final form and, and actually publicate, you know, have a publication that you will be getting shortly in the new year. So. Because it's, it's adopted. Okay, we're on the motion on the twenty-eighteen budget. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, if I can find my version. Now, that's just for the budget. Now, we're going to go on to the next thing. The next thing is to adopt the final levy. That resolution was in your packet, to adopt the levy?
We've got two resolutions, Your Honor.
Oh.
The second one is for the special levy.
Okay, I, I was going to do that separate, but we want it as in the same resolution?
These are all together.
Okay, they're all together. So this includes the, the special, the special levy?
That's what we asked for.
Okay, okay. Special levy is the HEDRA, is the HEDRA, I'll bet. I'll seek a motion. Councilmember Lund makes that motion approved, seconded by Councilmember Leifeld. That motion is before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. And I get to the most anticipated part of this evening. Comments from the audience? Is there any comments from the audience? Okay? Okay. Seeing none, council announcements? Announcements? Seeing no announcements, I have a few announcements. Tomorrow, Tuesday, December nineteenth at seven PM, the Heritage Preservation Commission has been canceled. On Thursday, December twenty-first at six-thirty is HEDRA. HEDRA was going, is going to be rescheduled, so it will not take place this Thursday, December twenty-first, it's being rescheduled.
It will be, it's the new meeting. That's the rescheduled date.
Okay, it says HEDRA rescheduled. So what they mean by that is, is I'm getting the interpretation, is that it's been rescheduled and it will be on Thursday, December twenty-first at six-thirty. Am I correct? Okay, so HEDRA, six-thirty Thursday, December twenty-first. Just reading what it says here. On Monday, December twenty-fifth, and of course, Monday, January first, those Merry Christmas Day on Monday, December twenty-fifth, and New Year's Day, Monday, January first, the city offices are closed. On Tuesday, January second, that will be our next city council meeting at seven PM. We'd like to wish a happy birthday to Julie, right over here. Happy birthday, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay. And another twenty-ninth birthday, we're going to get to celebrate on. Yeah, it's great, isn't it? Okay. Council and, and to members, condolences to Councilmember Mark Vaughn. Mark, I speak on behalf of all of us here. Our condolences on the recent passing of your father. I lost my dad, I know how, how hard that can be. And our thoughts are with you, councilmember, and your family and at this time of your loss, so we wish you the best and your family. On behalf of the city of Hastings, we wish everyone a peaceful and safe holiday season and we look forward to a great twenty-eighteen, when we'll be meeting next. Councilmember Leifeld?
To verify, Nick, is the open house tomorrow night?
It is, yes.
Could you give us some details quick, please?
Four, seven PM at Our Savior's Church. And our crack team of, our city engineer and his staff will be there welcoming the public from the neighborhood, so.
If you could remind the public what, what the meeting is involving?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the neighborhood open house for the twenty-eighteen Neighborhood Improvement Project.
Thank you, councilmember. Tomorrow night from four to seven, Our Savior's Church. Basically Ward Two there for the Road to Prove a Project of Twenty-Eighteen. Okay, there's no further business before this council. Motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Leifeld. That's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, we are adjourned, thank you.